This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, November 21st, 2023. This is the regular November meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in Meeting Room C of the Davenport Public Library in Maine. My name is Steve Emming, President of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call the meeting to work. First item on the agenda is, well called, an introduction of attendees. Malvika Shwankani?
Present.
Sylvia Roba?
Yes.
Amanda Votto?
Here.
Joe Heinrichs?
Here.
Laura Gennas, not here yet, but we're expecting her. Tom Eggelman, also not here, but we're expecting him. And I'm Steve Emming, present. Okay. Also with us today, we have Jeff Collins, a library director. Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager. Tracy Moore, Development Director. Casey Shipley, Recorder. Christina Amador Perez, Principal Senior Clerk in Special Collections. And Ray? Ray's here? No? Okay. So, and Christina Amador Perez is here as a representative of the...
Right?
Staff Association.
Staff Association?
Staff Association, yes. I remember the association. I just forgot the staff. Sorry about that.
She is associate.
Okay.
And Mary.
And, oh, yes.
But it's Mary.
Now at the bottom of this, Heidi Ruben, President of the Friends of the Library Board. And Mary Tengin is our City Councilwoman. Well, it's been a couple of nights. That's item one. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And so if I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, I appreciate it.
I second.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Malvika. I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. I'll put a vote. Malvika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And my own rule is yes. Motion's here. Next item on the agenda is Public Comment. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is Reports and Communications. First item there is the Friends. Heidi.
Yes, well, I grabbed my reminder, so Jeff, help me out if I miss anything here from our meeting last week. We had our RFP for our investments, and we, as a board, decided to stay with where we were since there were no major concerns or issues with our current... Ed... Orange. Thank you. Thank you very much. No, I word search a lot, so I appreciate that.
That's okay.
We're also going to be opening the new children's area, the New Children Existence, is that the right terminology? Next weekend, not this weekend, first weekend in December. So we're having the ribbon cutting for that, so that's super exciting. And I believe...
You agreed to fund a proposal for a new food bank?
Yes, thank you. We agreed to fund the proposal for the food bank at Fairmount, which has been going very, very well to keep the kids a little less hangry when they come out of school than not. So that program's worked very, very well for a very minor dollar amount. So that's been helping the staff there and keeping the kids a little... I know how I get, so I can imagine. And I think...
Thank you for that. Anything else you do?
Thanks.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are Committee Reports. First item there is Finance. We'll wait until the C of Tom arrives. Next item is Personnel. What's going on there?
Yes, we will be doing the library director evaluation in today's meeting later on, and then submitting that to the city hopefully shortly thereafter.
Are you not set? Next item under Committee Reports is Advocacy. Malvika, what's going on there?
Big net on November 17th, the DEI Committee. The DEI Committee is now newly constituted, and now its idea, I love the name. Ideas that A is accessibility, access, things like that. So it's really brand-newly constituted, the makeup of it and things like that. So they had their first meeting, the newly constituted committee's first meeting in October. And then I met along with Emily and Bianca, with all of them, last week on November 17th. And it's just beautiful to see the energy and the thoughts and the research they all have been doing on various aspects, you know, of training. And the other most important part was Sharp Containers. They did a lot of research on Sharp Containers, and I think they have provided that research and information to the administration to see how we can have them and the reasons why we need to have them in there. There will be training. They do have training right now, which is sent and shared to the staff on a very active monthly basis. But they also are planning to have something in the form of a lip guide. Lip guide is nothing but, I call it a micro blog, let's say, you know, where you can attach it to a website and things like that. And they will be sharing that link, because I said that would be useful for us too, you know, just to leave what's happening and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So they will be sharing that link with us. And the reason I say sharing that link is because it will be not a public link. It will be, when I say private, I mean those who have the link would be able to assess it. That's what I mean by private, you know, because it's an internal training kind of thing. So we'll be getting that as well. And the actual regular meetings of the newly constituted committee will be starting in January of 2024. Before I step ahead and share something else with you, I just wanted to really, really commend all of them in the staff who did this excellent, excellent research on the Sharp Containers. I mean, that was just beautiful. So I really want to commend them on that. That's the part of the IDEA Committee. While there at the meeting, I went to the children's area and saw the new installation, and it's just simply superb. I mean, I can roll myself on those things. Let's start. I did not do it. I also want to bring it to your notice, Jeff. Someone from my Neighborhood Watch approached me, and they said, you know, they must have gone to the library's Facebook page, and on the library's Facebook page, there is a notice which says, "Library will be closed 24th," you know, those dates. Put in your holes, you know, for books, or something like that. It's a lovely little graphic that you have. And the graphic below has a link. And when you click the link, it takes you back, yes, to the catalog, no doubt. But the appearance of, and I went and clicked it to see, and they said, "Oh, my gosh, that click is so cool." So I clicked that link to see, it came up with three, what do you may call it? Three pictorial frames, let's say, which had book covers within it. And the reason she brought that up, and she said, "You know, it made me interested to really click through and see what I can put more on." I said, "Hey, thank you. I appreciate that." So I wanted to let you know. That was observed, and someone came up to me and let me know about it. Lastly, I did see, I was not able to be there at the last meeting. And I just had a quick question, because we talked, I think we talked about Eastern Avenue Cafe at the last meeting. And Davenport School System, as well at EICC, do look out for people where their students can manage and sell items. But I wanted to check with you all before I go and just ask someone to get in touch with you. Is that okay, before I...
Yeah, our only concern would be how logistics on something like that, because we wouldn't be able to manage the children, the students. We'd need to have somebody from the school onsite and implement a group kind of some sort of...
And I don't know, Jeff, how they do, because there is a teacher who kind of oversees the project. I don't, but I'm not certain. But is it okay if I say something, and I just say, "Why don't you, you know, connect to it, Jeff?" Okay. Thank you. I will do that. That's all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda under Reports and Communications. Hi, Laura. The record showed that Laura Gennas is joining the meeting. Next item under Committee Reports is the Director's Report.
Thank you, Steve. Just a couple of things to highlight from the Director's Report for this month. So much Malvika and Heidi already mentioned. The first, obviously, is the enhanced use spaces, areas of old Eastern and Fairmount. We had the Virgin Group artists onsite the week of November 5th to the 11th, and they were able to actually do the installation ahead of schedule in just about a week. They were scheduled to be out for 16 days, so that worked out really well. The space turned out fantastic. We're still going to continue to do some additional things to multiple of those spaces, and then turn our attention towards Maine, which will occur in the fall, hopefully, of next year. And just to point out that the Virgin Group shared that comment in here, saying that we were one of the best libraries to work with, which I consider really high praise, because these, this team is one of the... They're kind of the big players in this field, and they do thousands, they've done thousands of installations of thousands of public libraries, not just in America, but also in Canada as well. So I thought that was a real tester to our staff, and they basically worked it, and they do. And then Malvika had mentioned Sharp's Containers, so fortunately, we now have those installed in the public and staff restrooms at all three buildings. We weren't able to get them in every single restroom, but in the bulk of the restrooms. So that's just one other way that we're trying to make the library more welcoming and inviting to the community. Our Business Services Program launched on November 1st. We're excited about that for sure. And we have the subscriptions that I mentioned previously, the Link to Learning and the AL Business Plan Center. So I'd encourage you to share that information with your networks if you know somebody that's interested in business development, et cetera. And then call attention to Brittany Peacock, too, our Community Outreach Supervisor, because she is just now wrapping up her tenure as the President of the Association of Public Library and Outreach Services, ABOSS. And that's a national organization, so I'm familiar with ALA. And she served as President this year. And last month in Pennsylvania, their annual conference, they had the highest turnout that they've ever had as well. So just a great, great work on her part to represent the library nationally and the great work she's done there, and also to bring back ideas for community here. So really exciting stuff. And then the last two things to point out, the grand opening and ribbon cutting. I would encourage everybody to come if you're able to. It'll be Saturday, December 2nd, at Eastern at 9:30 a.m. And then at Fairmount at 2:15 p.m. So if you're able to attend one or the other or both, that would be wonderful if you're able to be there. We'll just have a short ceremony, ribbon cutting, and there will be some cookies onsite and just to celebrate the new space and what that looks like. And then also a reminder, next Thursday, November 30th, from 6:00 to 7:00, there will be a boardroom series training for the board. If you're interested in attending, it'll be over at Eastern. And I'm happy to answer your questions on the report.
Just a quick question. Some of these things seem to me like newsworthy, and I wonder if they go into the paper, like a...
Which things in particular?
For example, about the person who's the National Public Library person. Her name is...
Brittany.
Yeah. Like about that, or about the coffee and cocoa thing, which I think is a really great idea that we don't offer that. It seems like a couple of other things I thought.
Sure.
I assume there will be something about the new space.
Yeah, well, typically, there's actually one out that River City readers picked up as well. We'll typically put out a press release once every two weeks or so, on average, and it's dependent on what the news media will pick up, on what they consider newsworthy or if it's a slower day or busy day for them. They did pick up on this grand opening celebration, the Jan Breton event. So that'll draw some people in, and that one's out for sure.
Okay, I just thought about, I don't really read the paper that much anymore, not that local paper. But they used to have a, like, in-business sort of thing, and they show pictures of people who did stuff. And that seems like Brittany could be a measure. Are they super... Is that? It's a, like, in the business section. They'll have highlights of people who do stuff.
Yeah, they use... I don't know if they have a business section.
Well, yes.
I'm familiar with what Sylvia is speaking of. It may have just taken a new format. It used to be something different, different shape anyway.
I think you mentioned it.
And the other one, that was, that one was yet paid or...
But you really made me think just now, there is something that runs, I forget the name, it's Quad City. There's a name to it. Quad City Going Arounds or something like that. And quite a few libraries and other people, businesses have put things in it, and I will look out today for it. That's something that I, if it's a pay, I would just...
You make us together, Quad City. Yeah, and other things that people want, now you've been something.
Yeah, and Sylvia's kind of, I would suggest we consider alerting the Quad City Business Journal, too.
That's new.
Business Journal. In addition to the Times. And I know they'll throw in the paper later.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda under Reports and Communications is Councilwoman.
Yes, so I'm sure you all are aware, we've got some transition going on in upper management at the city. Our city manager will be leaving, and is leaving. And so we have Mallory Merritt, who is the Chief Financial Officer, is being our, is our transition CEO. She's a very, she's a very experienced person. But of course, that's changed. For now, we will be starting a search for a new city manager in the next year. And then also, a long-time, a long-time staff council, Tom Werner, is retiring at the beginning of the year, and that, this was something he had actually talked about so a while back. So he will be retiring, and that will, you know, that will certainly be a change as well. And those are, you know, they're two major folks for the city. So there is a, there is a, though, again, Mallory has been named the interim city manager, so we move forward. The new council, we have five new, I think it's five new council. Which is... Yeah. Anyway, it just went, somebody, something said, and it was wrong. But yeah, and I thought I lost my mind, but I haven't. So because the seventh ward position is open right now, we have no seventh ward alderman, as is the typical situation when you have an open position. When a new person is elected, they are immediately sworn in. So it's a short amount of time, but so Michelle Lynch, who is the new seventh, well, it was elected to the position of seventh ward, will be sworn in at tonight's meeting. And then the rest of the new council people will be sworn in at their regular time, which would be, you know, the first meeting in January, and that's pretty standard. It happened with Rich Clowell, it happened with somebody else that we did that with recently. So in any case, it's typical, it's typical what happened. And so I think Cornet, as a matter of fact, was sworn in early. So in any case, that will happen tonight. And the end of the year schedule, which is always a little bit different. So tonight, we always have our city council meeting on Thanksgiving week, it's always on Tuesday night, and it is again tonight, because this Wednesday is the fourth Wednesday of the month. We have an extra week in November. There is no council next week, because we would really screw up the two-week cycle that we get. And so then we will come back then in early December for one cycle in December, which is, which is the two-week cycle, which is again very typical of what we've done in the past. So if you're planning to close a street or, you know, play loud music, get your thing in, you know, get it in for the upcoming cycle, because there's one upcoming cycle left. And then the, some of the changes that the state did last year in terms of how things are funded, we all talked a little bit about that, you know, through the state budget, has had an impact on, has the trickle-down effect. So we will not be doing our, we usually do our budget meetings in January, but they will have to, they can't start until February, because, and we will be approving... We usually have to have our budget approved by March 1st, but it will be a little bit later, and it's all, it's all a trickle-down from all the changes that they made. So in any case, so we will have our budget, our wonderful, exciting Saturday budget sessions will be in February. And we don't have a schedule precisely. I think the first one is going to be more an orientation for new aldermen and sort of, of course, they will be, have been on council for a month by then. And then usually, I think we do the CIP budget, and then the operating budget, and then we have a fourth meeting if we need to. So that will all be coming out. So that's kind of the schedule for the new council over the next, the next... I have been out, been reaching out to the new council people, done that. I started doing that immediately. I have met with three of them and just tried to welcome them, as I always do. So, so, you know, I would certainly, these are, some are new. Some are probably more actively engaged in public life or have been, whether they've been on commissions or whatever, or have run for office before. So some you may know better than others, but, you know, certainly always an opportunity to, you know, reach out if you have not and teach them about the library, and I always encourage that. So, and some may have a great relationship right now that I don't know about. So in any case, so I look forward to the transition and moving forward. That is a lot of change, but we can deal with change, so we will do that. So anybody has any questions?
I'm in Metro Jade Buckholder. Worked for Orderage Coffee with a Cup in an academic setting at Angros, and she came here, and I realized she's my colleague, too. She's now working at Angros since October, so...
Oh, what does she do? I had a similar question.
I think in the career center.
Oh, okay, great, great. I didn't know that.
So she came up with internships and things like that, so...
Very good.
Wonderful, pleasant lady. I met her with her.
Yeah, right.
And Steve, just so the board knows what Mary mentioned, I did send a letter offering library services to all of those individuals that are kind of on board, and also a list of a bunch of different services that we can help them with, including research or historical research using the archives, one-on-one time with our librarians, if they need assistance with that. Use of the facilities, study rooms, meeting rooms, all of that stuff. And then also an offer for tour of the building or near the buildings. I haven't heard back yet, but I believe those letters just went out on the Monday. So, yeah, I'll follow up again in a couple of weeks and continue to follow up and hopefully try to have that happen as soon as possible.
How many of the, would you know, like, how many of the Business Services now? Like, do you see some...
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Out and out, they're asking, so probably would come to you directly if they're ready.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not sure.
Just curious.
And I just looked up their library account or anything.
Oh, no. Probably not the, probably personal information. You can keep us here, so...
Have fun at the library.
I've sent out a few things, just to one who is very interested, particularly interested in zoning and history. And I sent my vacant properties white paper. I sent something I had written about the city that involved the city, because I, you know, had some questions about stuff. So I came home and said, "Well, here you go." There seemed to be someone who enjoyed that. So, in any case.
Moving on then. Next item on the agenda is Old Business. First item, excuse me, first item there is motion to approve changes to the volunteer policy. I have a motion in that regard.
I'll move it out.
Can we submit that? Just a second. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the changes to the volunteer policy. We've got a discussion. That's Jeff.
Just one thing to clarify from the last meeting. DEI team did have an opportunity to look at this and provide a little bit of feedback. And one of the questions that they had was, "Why call out the dress code if there's a manual, a volunteer manual with the dress code in it?" And so their recommendation was to tweak that language where it says, "Accept the dress code", and just change it to something like, "Including the volunteer manual." Does that make sense?
Oh, I like that thought.
Sure.
I was wondering why that was out.
And I believe the main reason we wanted to separate that in the first place was to make it clear that some of the volunteers we have, they might be outdoors, they might be gardening, they might be, you know, we don't expect them to be in like a business professional kind of setting. So there's a separate volunteer manual that addresses the dress code for volunteers.
So it would just say, "Volunteers follow the same policies, procedures, and guidelines as library employees..."
And book.
Yeah, like policies, procedures, and volunteer, what is the language going to be? Or are we going to have to write some off of that?
I think we could do it now, depending on what we would like it to say. But would it work to say, "Volunteers follow the same policies, procedures, and guidelines as library employees, including the volunteer manual, or and the volunteer manual?"
Maybe would the volunteers follow the volunteer manual and the same policies, procedures?
As well as?
Yes.
As well as, yeah.
Yes, too.
Yeah.
Volunteers will follow the...
Volunteer manual as well as...
And the... And the same policies? So that would, that read, "Volunteers follow the, follow the volunteer manual and the same policies, procedures, and guidelines as library employees?"
It was going to be as well as. The B and...
And then take out, "Accept the dress code."
Yeah, I got that part.
So just instead of and right there, they're saying as well as.
Oh, okay.
I move, "We accept as amended."
I just want to be sure I have it right here. Volunteers follow the volunteer manual as well as...
The same policies.
The same policies, procedures, and guidelines as library employees.
Period.
Okay, so...
Put it down.
Sylvia, are you okay with making that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the amended motion is... To approve the changes to the volunteer policy, which the first sentence and the last paragraph will read, "Volunteers follow the, volunteers follow the volunteer manual as well as the same policies, procedures, and guidelines as library employees." Yes, perfect. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion in this regard? I have one question, and it kind of has to do with that same thing. When we're talking about procedures, or policies, I'm sorry. We have policies that the board approves, but then there's all these other policies that are actually, are they actually in the city policy manual?
So we have, the board approves administrative policies and board policies.
Yes.
And the board approves all policy for the library. The board policies are more like public policies, for the most part, how they impact the public, and the admin policies are more how they impact staff. And if there is not a policy in place, then we will defer to the city's policy.
So in the volunteer manual, like, what does that cover? I'm just wondering if there's instances where the volunteer manual is going to be different than what applies to library employees? So then it's like, how do you follow both?
The volunteer manual will just provide additional details. It's just like a procedure, kind of guidelines. It would just provide some of that, and I don't know if Karen Brose to add more to that.
Because our volunteers don't have access to any of our staff, anything, so this is provided to them when they start their first day of volunteer work, that they have that information.
Okay. I'm just wondering if there's any policies, procedures, and guidelines that would apply to library employees that don't actually apply. Are there any other than the dress code that applies to the employees? Like to regular employees? If we're saying they follow the same policies, procedures, and guidelines, I'm just wondering if there's any that would be, it sounds like the dress code's different.
There's nothing graded other than the dress code that is slightly different for the volunteers. So the things that are included in that manual are all the same kind of documents that we've been just adding.
Okay.
Administrative policies, don't they cover things like sicklies in that?
Is that one of yours?
He said administrative.
Policies?
Like sickly.
Don't they, they cover things like sickly?
Yeah.
That wouldn't apply to these?
No. They don't apply to employees.
Okay.
I guess that's the cure for your concern, is that those policies that aren't applicable are going to say, "Employees."
Right.
Right.
But yeah, there is still that question.
Volunteer might come and ask for their sick leave.
Well, I mean, I was just offering that as an example.
Right.
I know there are, there are, you know, very clear term. I know there are tons of those administrative policies. Cause if you may remember, those who have been around for a while, we went through these things for, it seemed like days.
I don't, I had read the one of two thing before I became a trustee. Now I forget what I'd read it, but it was of this library when it's online under policies.
Okay.
But I don't remember.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I will call for the board on this amended motion. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion here. Next item on the agenda under old business is a motion to approve changes to the mission statement and vision statement. They have a motion to approve those statements.
That's all, Steve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. I have a motion in second to approve the changes to the mission and vision statement, which were presented and discussed at the last meeting, I understand. Very discussion. Okay, seeing hearing none, I will call for the vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Laura?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the president's comments. There's a, obviously a lot going on with libraries and things and just ask everybody to kind of keep your ear to the ground on some of these items that are going around. You may have seen in the newspaper. Think I may have actually heard this on NPR, at least on IPR, Iowa Public Radio, about something that went on in the Pella Library. I don't know if anybody saw that, but they had a referendum, non-binding referendum on their, in this last election to make the library board of trustees actually then under the city council. In other words, they would become an advisory board and would not, would not have their own powers. There are two of those that exist now, North Liberty and one of the Clive, I believe it is, that have some, one of the suburban areas around Des Moines, who, who actually, their advisory to the city council and library matters. They do not act as like the board of trustees like we did. Anyway, apparently reading this article, this, this referendum or the thing that started, and this had to do with, with books. And it actually goes back to like 2021 is where this started. And it's just been kind of brewing and people who, who were ahead of this thing, you know, went and got a, got a, you know, got a measure put on the ballot to, to, to vote on this. And as I mentioned, it was, it was kind of, it was non-binding, as they recall it saying, but that's just kind of some of the things that are out there and things we just need to kind of keep an eye on and, you know, if need to think about how we might, what we might do to, you know, keep sort of those things that happen around here. And I think part of that is, is, you know, building our, our group of fans, you know, and, you know, our library supporters so we can, you know, call on them when needed also. Sylvia?
I, I, I thought that the library board and the library structure was a state statute. Like it was created by state regulation so that it's not up to the city of Davenport to decide about the structure. It is a state, right? And like, apparently not.
I, I, yeah.
Well, they want to.
I can't answer that right now, but.
But they're non-binding, right?
Well, this, this vote in Pella was, was non-binding. Yeah, I, I wasn't aware of any of this having been going on.
Cause you remember when we had the situation with the Civil Rights Commission? And the mayor was interventing, I mean, there were things. And I called Steve and say, Steve, so say could this happen to our board? And you did this research and it was like, no, that cannot happen to our board because of these state regulations. It had to be a, it had to be a referendum with like 60% of the vote to get, to change a library board member. The mayor cannot do that, according to what your research.
Well, I can't quote it right now, but just, just to be a little bit more clear on that. And you can't remember the exact language, but, but they, I'll, I'll get it.
Am I not saying it right?
No, I think, no, I don't think, I don't think, yeah, we'll circle back around with this. But it has to do if they're going to change something like the structure. But, but the thing about it is I, I do believe there may be power to, to change the role of the board of trustees, but if it doesn't pass, they can't do anything like that again for like four years, but I'll get the details on that.
So how did the Pella go?
It was approved narrowly, like 51%.
To go under the city?
No, no, it was, it was said it was like, it was non-binding. So I'm not sure.
Yes, I don't understand. What does that mean? Like we just did it for fun, just to take the temperature of the community? I don't understand an organizational structure shift that's non-binding.
Well, it, it wasn't, it wasn't changing the structure of it. It, it was just so that people could, you know, in a.
Voice their opinion about it?
Yes.
Oh, that's pretty scary.
You know, a formal election process.
Take the temperature of the community. I don't know what that was.
So the other questions I have, the ones in North Liberty and Clive, is that the way they were always structured because of the size of their cities? Or did they do a similar thing? I mean, I could see in the smaller city where you don't have a huge city council, a huge city structure, this might be the way it was, but was that, was that a change for North Liberty and Clive? Or always the way?
Yeah, I don't know that. I don't know how it started out, but yeah, I don't recall anything about that.
Thanks for having me on that. You know, I, it's makes, it's concerning because of the amount of strange, the, the kinds of legislation coming out of Des Moines that could change state, you know, if there is state guidance on this.
Well, just, just quickly add that someplace in Michigan, there was a question about banned books. And the library board of trustees sided with the director's recommendation that or decision that a book or books should not be taken out of the library. The person or group, whoever went to the city council and the city council told the library board, you know, to get these books out of there. And they said, no, we're not going to do that. Maybe cutting, shorting circuit, all this and summarizing it. But, but anyway, they wouldn't do it. So the city council took some alternate action and just eliminated the library's budget.
Well, and.
The other people?
I guess my question would be because we are, I mean, we make recommendations that have to be approved by the city anyhow, like our budget and things like that. Could that happen here?
I don't know.
No.
Not our Washington, buddy. No, I don't watch this. Area of throat.
I'll bring some information back because I just wanted to pitch on a little.
But remember, a lot of stuff has to be done by referendum as well. And getting, you know, enough people in the city of Davenport to sign on to something like this. You know, it doesn't get on referendum because some, a few people want it. It has to be a major.
Well, you have to, S have a petition.
Yeah, and it's gotta be a, and I don't know if this is the same as petition to, on some of the other things, but it's got to, I don't know, I mean, to, to, to get someone to run, it's like 10% of the voters in the last general election or something, which is 10,000, 6,000, 10,000. And, but I'm not, and I just don't, you know, I'm wondering here because looking at the school board, which is a much kind of a bellwether in a sense, there was no, in Davenport at least, there was not the coalition of, you know what I mean?
Kind of a opposite, really.
That happened in, in other places that's got camps.
Yes, not.
So, but I'm not saying it, we shouldn't have been careful, but you know it.
So I'm, I'm wondering because there's.
Into a library year, too.
This year we seem to be contemplating a lot of bigger issues in terms of legislation, organizational structure, governance, oversight, things like that. Do we need to formalize the way that we lean into the resources of the Iowa Library Association? Like, do we need to have that be like a specific, you know, monthly activity of advocacy committee? Or, I mean, I'm just feeling like that's a resource that we should be like leaning on because I think it's really great that you're bringing this to our attention. I at least wasn't aware of that issue and I am on the ILA list serve and make a ridiculous amount of emails that they send.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking like, how do we get ahead of things like this? How do we formalize this type of topical conversation so that we're prepared to have? To act.
Keeping as uniform as we possibly can and use them as a resource.
Let me, let me put something together and send it out. I don't, a lot of the information I get comes from the Iowa Library Association.
And, and sometimes now I'm being in a library fear, I try and make it a point to share articles with you all, to be on top of it, you know, you know. So, and I was thinking when I was even talking, I was thinking, is there a possibility then to have something like a lib guide, private, private lib guide where, you know, instead of sending emails, we all, I don't mind doing it if it's okay, but it's not going to be mine, it's going to be libraries' orders. You know, you put, keep on putting these kinds of articles. Like when you said Pella is the gender queer thing that happened and that's why I went to a referendum and that's how, how the work. So is this something that we could do to what you said? Like I'm on the advocacy, the volunteer committee of ILA. So, you know, it's the same stuff I get, what I sometimes share with you all, so.
I think it's something we don't need to necessarily reinvent the wheel. There's, this is done nationally and we could find some of those resources and share them. If you're, that'd be helpful for sure.
I'm just trying to think of a way to systemize it so that way it's not, the burden isn't falling on really quickly the two of you who seem to be the ones that are bringing these topics, you know, to us more regularly.
And that, oh, no, it's fine because I am a part of the whole thing. But, you know, it could be, and that's why I said, would it be something where it's all formalized? And rather than sending emails or sharing emails, it sits there so we have, we can have access to it whenever we want. And that's what I meant by the lib guide part, you know. But that's something they could think of later.
So, yeah, I'll put something together on some of these topics and get together with Jeff and Julie and everything covered as best we can. But anyway, we'll move on here. For training, Christina. Tell us about the staff association video. Got it right that time. Yes, thank you for giving the, let the record show that Tom Mink is in his training.
Yeah.
Sorry, you can't see.
Wait a minute, that photo. Sorry, folks.
Stop that, listen.
Okay, my name's Christina. I'm with the DPL Staff Association. The purpose is to establish and maintain an effective body for accomplishing social, professional fundraising and charitable ends and to speak for the library and its staff with one voice. So we have a picture of our staff and a lot of us are wearing our American Needs Public Library shirts that we order. We, we do a group order so that we don't have to pay for shipping and all of that stuff. And we can get, there's every spring and fall, we do an order. We just finished one now. And there's different colors to choose from and different styles. So this is a T-shirt and then I also have a sweatshirt with people who get cold. But, yeah, we, it's, they're from Raygun. And the staff just tell us how many they want, what size, and they give us the money. And then we make one big order from Raygun and pay out of our staff association fund. And the way the staff association fund works is everybody's invited to give from one to five dollars each month. And that money can be taken straight out of their paycheck. So it's as a deduction on their paycheck. And then the city sends us a check every month for that amount, for the dues that they have paid. So when staff are hired, they are invited to fill out the contribution form. And then any, anytime they want to maybe give a little more or maybe give a little less, then we can, we can update that information for them. And with that money, we purchase small gifts for anniversaries. So when, for five years, they get a bookmark. For 10 years, they get a magnet. For 15 years, they get a green mug. And then starting, starting at five years, they get a certificate of appreciation that's signed by the director. I made one here for the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. In recognition of 123 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
The staff also, we have great members who handwritten notes that every year on their anniversary, like, thank you for what you do. And they're all personalized and they're all really nice. And then starting at 10 years, we like to get treats for everybody. So cupcakes or cookies or donuts or something for the whole staff to enjoy in honor of their 10, 20, 25, 30, 40, whatever it is. We've had 50. So, yeah. And then if there is a retirement or, or somebody leaves and has been working here for over five years, then we, we're sad, but we give, we, we get treats too. And give them a certificate too. And then if there's marriages and births, so they get a wedding gift card and a birth gift card. And also there's sympathy cards that we send out if, if we know that there's been a death in the family or if they're on medical leave or they're having surgery. We send that out to them. For social, we do, every month we buy treats for everyone and we have a sign with the birthdays for that month. So instead of each individual person getting one thing for the birthday, we'll just have, this is all the November birthday, yes. And we try to get different snacks each month. National Library Week is in April and National Library Workers Day is on that Tuesday. And usually we have fun stuff all week long, different treats. We try to get some jeans days, staff loves jeans days. And, and then there's the in-service that we have every year. We usually try to have some kind of after-party because we normally do not leave work at 4:00, 4:30. It's like we get, we get out like an hour earlier than normal. So what we can do with that hour, so. So we've had, we've had some after-parties at the buildings or at the arcade, if it's depending on which buildings we're having it. We just had a hot look this weekend, on Friday, we bought chicken for the staff, and then everyone signed up to bring in side dish or a dessert. And we just had our Halloween costume contest, and it can be an individual entry or a group entry. So the tech services department dressed up as the characters from Clue.
Guess where the murder occurred?
And this year, the youth services department dressed up as a used car lot, so there were the loading guys. And there was a used car sale. And we, it's a contest, and then we asked another library to judge. Because Rock Island, the Rock Island Library helped judge our entries. So, yeah, and we're going to have Jeans Days. So the Jeans Days, it's the charitable giving portion of it. People donate $5, and they can wear jeans on a day when you normally can't wear jeans, so not on Friday. And we're going to have Jeans Days on Mondays, starting next Monday, for our holiday giving, and it's going to go to the food bank. Usually, it's one a month, but for the holiday giving, we're doing it every week, so that we get more money. And then, the community really appreciates that we try to pick local organizations that need it. So we've done, we just did Junior Achievement, Gildas Club, the Iowa Donor Network. We did the Qua City Community Foundation for the building across the street, the Coaxial Building across the street. We did ALS, the Red Cross for tornadoes, what we had in the spring, University of Iowa Children's Hospital, Ukrainian Society of Eastern Iowa, Huntington Disease Society, which is very close to, one of our staff members has a lot of family members that are affected by that. So we asked the staff for suggestions, what, if they know of any charities that we could raise money for. And, yeah, and then we got normally ovarian cancer initiative, and Humanity of Mary. So, yeah, so for coming up, there's the hunger, the food bank, the Rosewood Food Bank, and then we're also going to have categories over email, and then everybody's going to have to pay to be entered and to play, and then that money is going to go to, I think it's to one of the animal shelters. So, yeah, and then, in addition to the staff shirts, we also do the summer reading. Every year, the summer reading program has a different theme. And they have different designs, so those were two different designs for this year. And that one's short sleeve, and that one's long sleeve, so, yeah.
Nice, oh, nice.
Very nice.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One comment, I mean, um, thank you for sharing. I think that this could be something where maybe you went to the friends at Davenport Public Library and asked them for some support as well, for some of your, I feel like they would probably want to contribute in some way, perhaps.
Christina, I think you, your group does a lot to, you know, make the library a great place to work, and also, as a part of that, do a lot for the community too, as far as the charitable giving, and that's what I appreciate.
That's exactly what I wanted to say as well, it's just the wonderful work that the Staff Association does for the library and the staff, and the morale, and just really help a lot. But then also, they find an opportunity to give back to the community too, which is just a testament to our amazing staff and who and what they do. And then Christina in particular, she's been with us for 21 years now, and does a phenomenal job, and has served on the Staff Association for many years, and so we're thankful for everything that she does.
Hey, Christine. Is there a possibility that this charitable, this lovely charitable giving that you do and give back to the community, that could be highlighted on the social media platforms of the library? You know, we, you know, we should be shared, like, I have a neighborhood watch, I love to share that when I share events about the library, saying, you're giving back to the community, so, if there's a possibility, if that could be, you know, highlight this beautiful.
And we've been doing this as the library, the city used to do more the United Way and Home Drive and holiday giving, and it's fallen off, so then we wanted to keep doing it, so we're just, we're just doing it on our own. So, yeah, the, the city used to have a newsletter, and they would post about which charities they were raising money for, but, yeah, we can do something like that just for us.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a closed session for purposes of evaluating the performance of the library director. I'll wait until we get things organized here, because that's part of the meeting.
You guys have a good holiday.
You as well.
Do you think you've got to make a motion to go?
Yeah, just tell me, hold on.
Hi. Have a good holiday. You guys too.
Okay, regarding the closed session, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. So.
Oh, I have to. Sorry. All right, I move the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees hold a closed session under Section 21.5, subsection I of the Iowa Code, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual's appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge as being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
Second. I have a motion and a second to go into closed session, I'll call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. Is unanimous, I want to note. Seven or less here.
This conference will now be recorded.
Meeting of the Library Board of Trustees for November is back in open session, following the closed session for the evaluation of the library director. And we will now take action on that evaluation. We have a motion regarding to approve the evaluation. Please speak up. Thank you, Joe, we have a motion from Joe, is there a second?
I say it.
Thank you, Malavika. So we have a motion and a second to approve the evaluation of the library director. Call for the vote. Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes.
Just can you knock now?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Yes.
You're today's Malavika, easily forget. So, anyway, yes, thank you, we'll get through this, yeah. So, the vote is unanimous, and thank you very much to our library director, Jeff Collins. Appreciate all you're doing. Anyway, with that, that will conclude our meeting for today, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Laura. Your motion for a second, so in favor of adjournment, please signify, well, yeah, to do by applause. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same signs? Okay, thank you, meeting is adjourned.